Can't toggle off that to make it not come up on your floor, and sorts of things like that.
Are you ready? Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town Board Work Session for February tenth. And ask everybody to please rise for...
The United States of America, unto the Republic whose stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
I ask everybody to please to silence their laptop devices. And I'm going to ask for a moment of silence and some reflection, um, keeping in mind our dear friend, um, Marge Maggard, our town historian who passed away this past week. Um, Marge was a big part of our town hall. She worked very hard for very little. She didn't ask for much. She worked hard with the veterans. The flags you see around town, um, on the posts in the summertime are because of Marge Maggard. And she's going to have, uh, big shoes to be replaced, to be filled. And hopefully we can find the right person to put the dedication in that Mrs. Maggard is. So I ask for a moment of sound reflection, keeping Mrs. Maggard in your prayers. Thank you very much. And having said that, Wednesday, along with the day of her funeral, the town hall will be closing from nine thirty to twelve to allow all the town hall employees to go to the funeral. So, just to make a note of it, it'll be on our website and shared on Facebook as well. With that, um, I would like to open up the public hearing on, um, the local law terminating the Environmental Commission, creating the Planning and Environmental Review Board. Do you want to read that for us?
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town of Lewiston, Niagara County, New York, on the tenth day of February two thousand twenty-five, commencing at six o'clock P. M. at the Town Hall, thirteen seventy-five Bridge from Lewiston, New York, on the adoption of a local law terminating the Environmental Conservation Commission and creating the Planning and Environmental Review Board. Said law is intended to eliminate the Town of Lewiston Environmental Conservation Commission and to rename and redefine the current Town of Lewiston Planning Board as the Planning and Environmental Review Board, together with establishing all appropriate authority therein. The complete text of said law is on file at the office of the Town Clerk and is available for review by any interested person during business hours. At such public hearing, all persons interested who wish to be heard will be heard. Gave January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, by the order of the Town of Lewiston Town Board.
Thank you. And as we open up the, uh, the public hearing, I just want to make note that Rob Morial is out of town on vacation, but he is zooming the meeting, so he'll hear everything that's said here tonight. So with that, do we have anybody that would like to speak in regards to the local law? Okay, there's nobody online. Tim, you want to say anything?
Really?
No, nothing to add to your last comments?
About the first memory.
About the law. Just, just how, how your position on it.
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, you know, I've been a, most people know I've been a big proponent of this change. Cause I think it'll streamline process, but I also think it not only streamlined the process, it'll make a better process, a cleaner process. And I, I actually had a conversation with Mr. Henderson on the phone on Friday and explained to him, cause he was, he came to the last public hearing and was a little worried about it. But I said, you gotta understand that every planning board meeting that we had, if they function as a environmental and planning review board, and we put some really quality people on that planning board recently, like we got the head guy of the D E C air quality division now on our planning board. So, and we got some really good quality people. But I also explained to him that the town engineer, the town attorney, the building inspector, the fire inspector, all these people come to the planning board meeting every month. Where the environmental commission was a little bit of a disadvantage, they only had the environmental commission and a board liaison. So, you know, to me, the, the diversity of thought and experience between the planning board and the group of town employees that come to each and every meeting that we get input from will make a better process. And I, I personally think it's going to be a, uh, more environmentally friendly and protective board. I'm not trying to say degrading the environmental commission of the past. I'm just trying to say, I, I think it'll streamline it and make a better quality product, is all I'm saying.
I couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more. And, you know, as much as we hate to admit, we're politicians up here, right? And nobody believes politicians.
Right.
And it is with my sincerest statement to say, the goal is to make it better and make it work.
One hundred percent.
And it wasn't better, it wasn't working. That's my real belief. If anybody was to be here in my shoes to see, I believe this is the best thing to do, long-term. And we can, and we can continue to tweak it.
Right.
You know? Uh, we'll make no decision tonight. I know there's nobody here. We, we, we got some emails that some people wanted to make some comments. We won't leave it open. What we will do is accept their comments before we make any final decision. I know Councilwoman Lecter and I spoke. She had some concerns over just a couple of minor issues. We worked on it together, Al Bax, Tim, we worked on it. So, um, there has been some effort in the last couple of months to get this over the finish line the way everybody wants it to be.
And well, you know, we'll take a couple of meetings to work some of the rough edges out. But like I say, we got Mr. Sandonaro on there now. We got Dr. Gallo, who's a biologist, um, on our planning board. Really, the only thing we gotta kind of work out is how it funk, the function of it, right?
The subcommittee aspect.
Correct, yes.
But again, with you being there and with our, our engineer there, the questions that you may bring up are going to be brought up directly to them.
Yep.
And you may, I know you, you may even say, this is an environmental issue we really need answered.
Yes.
So, and then they can do it right there, you know? Anybody else? You got a pretty good architect on there too. Is it great? I, well, I don't know. I haven't seen his credentials.
Yeah, we got, we got quality people on the planning board.
And anybody else? Anybody?
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it one, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When we get some, now that's going to public here.
With that, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much. The agenda approval. I need to add, under old business, the, um, modern landfill solar farm, I believe Citrine Power, um, to old business. Anybody else have anything to add to the agenda?
I have two, uh, appointments to the place to attend.
Okay, anybody else? The panel has asked for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, a motion to approve this amendment.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Um, we just received the, uh, minutes from the, uh, January twenty-seventh regular town board meeting, so we won't take any action on that tonight. I haven't had a chance to come over. Abstract of claims, Councilman Myers?
Uh, for February tenth, two thousand twenty-five, I move to approve the regular abstract claims, twenty-four dash zero three seven one seven through twenty-four dash zero three seven three eight, uh, and twenty-five dash zero zero one three four through twenty-five dash zero zero three zero four. Recommend total payment in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and nine cents. And post-audit in the amount thirteen thousand, six hundred, four dollars and fifty-five cents.
That's a motion.
That's a motion.
I'm second.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Um, department head statements. Did you have anything from the clerk's office?
No.
She, anything from the police department?
I'm on the, depending.
Tim?
Yes. So, December eighteenth, we put out the senior center lighting project to bid. And, uh, we awarded that bid in December to Loudon Building Company. And their bid price was thirty-nine thousand, six hundred. I had multiple contractors, like we had like five or six contractors bid on that job. And during the bidding process, I had a lot of phone calls on us asking questions like, you know, how do you want me to transition the rigid conduit to the plastic? How do you want me to, um, uh, or, or, we wouldn't recommend that light for that height pole? And different questions like that. And, and the, the amperage of the service and just different questions. And I, my statement to all of them was, bid it the way it's written. So, everybody is bidding apples to apples. So, I said, if the town board then wants to change it, after it gets awarded, they can talk about that and potentially change it. So that's what everybody did. The bid was awarded to Loudon Building Company. So, over the last couple of weeks, I went back to Loudon Building Co- Company and talked to them about the, uh, things that were brought up during the bid process. And the light fixtures and the conduit and different things like that. And said, could you go back, do a little more research on, is there a better light? Cause that was one of the big comments from all the contractors for that twenty-five foot pole. He said, yep. And then one of the other things that we talked about internally was, um, seeing it's the senior center parking lot, and they're going to be quite close, especially on the north side to the parking lot, should we put light pole protection in front of those lights? Because we got some elderly drivers over there to protect the light poles. So I asked them for a price on installing bollards in front of those light poles. I asked them for a price on upgrading that light. He came back with a price, um, in writing, and it was, it was nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents for each bollard installed. We'd need ten bollards. So that came, comes out to nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy cents. The lighting upgrade that he recommended was to go from an eighteen thousand lumen light to a twenty-four thousand lumen light. And the other thing, he said, if this was my building, what I would do, he goes, I would put a dusk to dawn sensor on the light. He goes, but they have a, they have a really nice sensor now that goes on at dusk, goes on it, off at dawn. But if there's no activity, it's programmable. You program it, if there's no activity, say, this, you know, the, the building's not open, it's eleven o'clock at night, you can program it to go down to thirty, fifty, sixty percent lighting at that point in time. Saves energy, lessen back to the neighbors. He goes, but it also has a motion on it. So if somebody were to drive in or kids were to walk through the parking lot, it senses the motion, goes right back up to a hundred percent. I thought that was a great idea. So the cost of the light fixture and the cost of those sensors were three thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents to go to those better lights with the motion and dusk to dawn sensors on them. So the total change on top of the thirty-nine thousand, six hundred would be thirteen thousand, one hundred, hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-nine cents, which would take the total cost of the project to fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-nine cents, which is still under the next bid of all the bids we get. The next bid was sixty-six thousand. So we're still, we're still, um, we're like fourteen thousand dollars under the next highest bid.
Yeah, and just so everybody knows, we originally planned to do this lighting on our own. And, um, Assemblyman Morinello came to us with a fifty thousand dollar grant for the senior center parking lot. He thought that would be a perfect location for the use of his grant. The seniors will be happy with it. So, out of the fifty-two thousand, fifty thousand is coming from the New York State Sam Grant, right? It's referred to as Jackie, from, uh, Assemblyman Morinello. So, um, my only question is, and Mitch, we didn't get a chance to talk, the bollards. I, I, I personally like the bollards, but I'm no expert. Are you good with the bollards?
Either one will protect the light, that's all that matters.
And, and, and did I hear you say you thought it was a good price that the guy quoted us?
Yeah, that's, that was everyone who was there with Tim.
Okay.
Just to talk, tell us the difference of the lights, the price.
Okay. So what you're looking for, Tim, and I'm looking for it because I've spoken to you about this, is the approval of a change order
Correct.
Of thirteen thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Yes.
Bob, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, just a question. Did you also talk to him about the rigid metal versus B T condo? Yep, and that, that isn't that price. Okay, good. That's in the three thousand, seven hundred and forty-six. Yes, thanks.
So I, I would ask for a motion for a change order of thirteen thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-nine cents for a grant total of fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-nine cents.
It's a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. And this is a long time coming.
Yes.
Yeah, this is one of those projects that kept on going back burner, so.
Tim, when do you think that they're going to start?
The second week in March.
Okay.
And they said it'll take two weeks to do it.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, very good. I know Rob will be happy too. So, um, moving along, uh, Jackie's on the agenda. Anything, Deputy Supervisor, anything there?
No.
Mitch, anything?
No.
Danny, anything?
I know we're on a break Saturday morning, Phil's home.
Yeah, how, how many hours it take you to fix it?
Ten.
Ten? And eventually, you gotta pave the road there.
Well, yeah. You're on one of the final plow truck, you're going to stop.
Yeah, as long as you guys know, I love to get out of road.
They know.
So, Jeff, anything?
Um, we finished that, um, twenty-four inch, uh, line that was leaking at the power authority on Wednesday the sixth, or Wednesday the fifth. Also, there are main panel project, phase two at the plant is still underway. And, uh, contractors installed some meters and it required us to shut half the plant down. And everything's backed up right now, so. That's it.
Bob, anything?
Uh, just a couple, uh, just for the board's information, we're, the Morgan Drive relief sewer is under design right now, uh, as well as the water storage bank, um, improvements, as well as the, uh, hillside drain. So a lot in the mix on our side under design at the moment.
I know Mitch, you didn't have much, I know we had a lot of snow, but the trees went down in, in the, what, three days? He was able to take all those trees in?
Yep, we got half a day worth of, plus the falling. It'll be out and we'll be able to proceed on it soon to get rid of some of this stuff.
Good. So I believe that's it for department head statements. Old pending business, we have Citrine Power Solar Farm. We have a representative from Citrine. I don't know if anybody has any questions for him before we move forward, um, or if you wanted to say something.
I'll just note my appearance as the supervisor, members of the board, Henry Zomerfeld from Hodgson Ross. Since we were here just two weeks ago on the site plan, there's been continued discussion about access. I know Mr. Masters and Chella, uh, Semen Bernie, who's the principal for Citrine, we have a negotiated and partially executed, uh, access agreement. We're just waiting that to be notarized by Modern. I expect that sometime this week. Uh, Mr. Masters saw a copy of that today in its final form. And, uh, absent any questions from the board on that or anything else, I would ask that the board proceed with granting site plan approval for the project.
Questions?
Uh, I just had the one question. Uh, when do you expect the soil study, uh, to be done as far as the stability?
I think that's in the works. We have to work through D E C and, and those approvals and, and work with their engineering staff. So I don't know, we have a specific timeline, but I'm happy to ask Citrine for what their expectations are and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, can we approve that subject to the, uh, they need to wait, is the staff standing to approve?
So we were gonna, I was gonna go to Tim first, okay?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, but, but exactly what you're talking about, we're gonna go to Tim first, Bob, and then Al is gonna tell us how we need to approve it. Does anybody else have a question? Bring it. Okay, so Tim, you've worked on this, I know you had some concerns.
Yeah, we went back and forth and, uh, I saw a copy of, I think on Friday, the easement language, which gives the town access rights into the proscenous, uh, into the property across modern disposals property. And it, it, Al knew the term for it, uh, he can explain that. But, uh, it, I had a follow-up question to her, because we also do annual safety inspections on those sites. And the easement didn't really cover that. So I said, well, you know, do you have a representative that comes with us to get us into the gate, to get us across that on an annual basis? And she said, yep, no problem. Um, every time you go there for your annual, we will be there, we'll open the gate, no problem. So that answered my questions. As long as Bob and Al are okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Bob?
Yep. So I took a look at the easement today, Tim and I discussed it. Uh, so I'm good with the easement figure and the bond amount, it was fine. So I, and there's not a whole lot to the site plan, to be honest, where they say it was done good.
Al?
I'm okay with the easement language as of existence. Mr. Zomerfeld doesn't have direct authority over that language. What you are aware of is that a host community agreement is necessary prior to the project actually starting. Mr. Zomerfeld and I will negotiate that. And my thought is, um, there are, there are a number of details in the easement that I, I would have liked to have tweaked before it started to get executed. But I'm rather confident that we could address that by reference in the host community agreement. Namely, um, I think the easement indicates that if there are any changes relative to the operations, et cetera, that the two parties to the easement will notify each other at the following address. I'd like to include in there the, the town, uh, building department and the town clerk. Obviously, if there are issues relative to, uh, operations, we want to be notified also. Because then it would be our, our springboard effectively to find out what's happening there and, and start, uh, determining whether we need to execute on the bond, et cetera. But these are all issues that I think we'll be able to address, Mr. Zomerfeld and myself, through all those community agreements.
I agree. Uh, I, I spoke with Mr. Bax briefly before the meeting. I think he and I negotiated the first host community agreement for the other solar project in Lewiston. So I'm happy to, you know, work on language and finesse everything.
Okay. So with that, I would ask for a motion for approval based on what?
Uh, subject to final signature on the, um, easement language, the easements that are being circulated that we've, we've seen part of, uh, and the negotiation of all those community agreements.
Okay. Can I defend a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any questions?
I'd just like to say one thing, um, this is what we've all been looking for for so long. And put these things on top of, uh, brownfields and, uh, it's like, it's a win-win for us.
I agree with you. Yep, I agree. So with that, I'll ask for, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you all. Anything you want to add, Rob?
Well, yeah, um, I'm sorry, I had, I had a mute, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Now, if they sell that in five years, the language will be in the contract. So a new company comes in, that when we go to do an inspection, that'll, that won't be an issue then. Is what we, I'm reading it, right? As far as getting onto the property?
No.
What about the new companies?
That wouldn't be an issue. So generally, and I don't know what the plans are, but just speaking from experience, if a developer of a solar project sells the project, they sell the whole entity. So there'll be no major change, it'll still be the same entity. And the entity will be subject to all of the obligations under the agreements.
I, I think what Rob is asking is if modern disposals sells to waste management.
It would be the same, the same situation. Yeah, it would be, that, that's, that's the way it's written. Particularly with the easement agreement, which is going to be recorded and changed in time.
Runs with the plan.
It runs with the plan.
Okay.
Okay, good, Rob?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, under my liaison report, we received a letter from the village of Lewiston, and I will read it. It's Supervisor Broderick and Town Councilman. The village of Lewiston Board of Trustees is requesting your support for a pavilion at Lewiston Ninety Waterfront Park. We are requesting two hundred thousand dollars in Niagara River Greenway funding to enable us to proceed with the construction of this project. The previous Niagara River waterfront pavilion was enjoyed by many residents, visitors and voters for picnics, parties and events, but was damaged and removed due to the two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen major flooding along Niagara River. The village of Lewiston applied for grant funding, but was not able to secure funding at this time. We ask for your support to reconstruct this beautiful pavilion that will enhance our beautiful waterfront for years to come. Uh, then they, they brought in some pavilion plans that are included in this, and they're asking us for two hundred thousand dollars. So, what I want to say first, I'll let everybody talk. Since I've been in office, we have provided the village of Lewiston, uh, starting in two thousand sixteen, thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars of greenway funds, two thousand seven for the Morgan Lewis Bus, two thousand seventeen, Discover Niagara Shuttle of a hundred thousand dollars, which mainly benefits the village of Lewiston. Two thousand nineteen, the Circle of Honor at Academy Park of a hundred thousand dollars. Two thousand twenty-three, the Lewiston Public Art Project, ninety thousand dollars. Two thousand twenty-two, the Maryland Tuvi Park of two hundred thousand dollars for the new pavilion, or I'm sorry, for Amer- the All-Inclusive Park behind Red Brick, and the pavilion at Academy Park, which we just gave them last year, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And on top of that, um, we paid for their holiday lights last year. All new, all the new lights on Center Street, we paid for, uh, approximately eighteen thousand dollars. There are some town projects finishing up our Lower River Road Park. I personally feel that we've supported the village incredibly well. We paid for both the Tuscarora Monument and the, um, uh, Freedom, uh, uh, crossing down the river. I feel like for the next year or two, we should focus on town Lewiston projects. And I don't feel like we should fund another pavilion in the village with what we've been generous and have already done. So that's my feelings. I, I don't know what anybody else's feelings are, um, but I'll let you guys speak. I, I personally am not going to ask for a motion for two hundred thousand dollars, but if you guys decide you want to make a motion to support this, that is your obligation, or your prerogative.
Mr. Supervisor, can I speak first?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I know you and I discussed this in late, but there's projects that need to be done in the town. Our pavilions, let's take for instance, Quanis. We got projects that rehab it. It wasn't feasible. Basically, that, that thing is probably forty years old, maybe older. And it, and I think we discussed, it really needs to be turned down and re, rebuilt. And it's a, it's a highly used park. The Fletcher Rock Pavilion is, is becoming a discreet fair. That's old also. And we have the bathroom at Lower River Road Fletcher, that the floor needs to be redone and, you know, new toilets. And, uh, there's the two other playgrounds that behind Lewiston too, and Sandborne, that are going to need some attention. So, I, I'm going to be meeting with that when I come back and with an architect and start, you know, moving the ball on some of these projects. So I think, um, we need to keep some of this money for our own projects at this present time. And that's all I got to say.
Okay, anybody else?
I agree with Rob, um, you know, we've been in that tough point of it, cause we live proximally to that. They are, it, it, the, uh, Fletcher Road, that's in two of the state plus the weekends. And I was a little surprised if the village didn't come to us and make a presentation and maybe a, a stone to pitch for why they needed it or why they felt, uh, we were the only source for this. But, but I'm not very, uh...
I thi- I think we're a victim of our own generosity, to be honest.
Yeah, I'd like to say that I also agree. Uh, I think at this point, Quanis, uh, Park probably deserves the attention just from the fact that we have that issue with the, um, choices. One of them missing, we're having some sagging issues. So I think it would be wise that we use the money to repair or replace.
So at this time, you note that there is no, uh, no motion to approve two hundred thousand dollars in funding? And, um, I will send out a letter accordingly, so, thank you. Mr. Bax, anything illegal?
Nothing to add, other than what I already mentioned there.
Bob, anything for engineering?
Nope, nothing, bro.
Okay. Finance, uh, Jackie, budget revisions?
Yes, I previously submitted ten budget revisions in your board packets. And tonight I ask for approval to process those.
I know Jackie, earlier you said you'd go over those and then, uh, make the motion to accept those, uh, budget revisions presented.
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Okay, Councilman Jacoby, police, uh, matters?
We have, uh, two part-time officers being appointed to be effective today. First one is Maria Westphal. And, uh, I have the sheet here, so you get to spell it. And the second one is, uh, I want to get some, Hace Nicholas Charles Hess. And, uh, they both start today, they both be paid according to the contract, and they're both part-time. Anita, I'm making a motion for that.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And that's all I get, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay, Councilman Myers?
Uh, just a correspondence from the Sandborne Historical Society, if there are regular meetings set for Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, at seven P M. at the Sandborne Farm Museum, uh, in the presentation entitled Legends, Lore, and Secrets of Western New York. This is Lorna, it's a note, uh, it's always open to the public with no charge, but she's always welcome, and they serve the freshmen.
Councilman Womack Lecter?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, um, privilege of the floor, any public comment? Nobody online, nobody here, um?
Steve, do you want to make one?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to say about Mrs. Mayter, she was our town historian and liaison to the historical committee. I don't think I've met anyone in town that would have worked harder than her, and, uh, she wasn't the kind of person, look at me, look at me, I'm doing this, let me get some. She didn't crave attention, she just went about her business. She had the energy level of someone forty years younger than she actually was, really, and she'll be sadly missed, all I got.
The one thing about Mrs. Mayter, she never asked for anything for herself, but I was afraid to make eye contact with her sometimes, because I knew the cost of town money for historic preservation, so, but she never asked for herself, and I, I know our building department is gonna miss her probably the most, because Mrs. Mayter never came in empty-handed, it was cheese crackers, pepperoni, fudge, um, yeah, she always, I don't know why she, she was fond of the building department, they didn't give her nothing, you know, um, she took care of them, so, um, yeah, she will be missed, and, uh, you know, just please keep her in your prayers, and, uh, God bless her and her family, so. Um, with that, the upcoming board commission meetings, I do not know about historic preservation, do you know if they'll still meet?
Uh, we're not meeting tomorrow, no, we haven't, uh, it's a, it's a.
Okay, so there'll be no historic preservation meeting tomorrow, zoning board is February thirteenth at six P M. Landing board is February twentieth at six thirty P M. Town board meeting is February twenty-fourth at six P M. And, um, Councilwoman Lecter, Councilman Myers, Councilman Jacoby, and myself will be attending, uh, the Association of Towns Conference in New York. Looking forward to picking up pointers to make us better individuals, sometimes I don't know if that's possible, but we are hoping to have a good weekend. Councilman Mailes in Florida, and he does not want to give up three days to go to New York from some sun and beach weather, so. But with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, good night, everybody.